Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Allegheny County Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which stands one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take roll.
Ms. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Pacowski.
Here.
Mr. DeMarco.
Here.
Mr. Dewar.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fittulis.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Uh, here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritsio. Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
We have 15 members present.
Thank you. Councilman Walton.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, I'm going to read a statement regarding a significant loss to the labor movement, to the city of Pittsburgh, and to a personal friend for over 45 years. Tom Conway passed yesterday, and Tom was the international president of the United Steelworkers. In this modern year, finding individuals dedicated to transformational change and radical action is rare. Tom Conway was one of those rare souls. To many of us, he was not just a colleague, but also a friend, an ally, and a gay change. He was also a champion for and a stock supporter of the Pittsburgh Easton Randolph Institute, embracing change the power of your career principles. I had the privilege of first meeting and working with Tom in the late 1970s through our shared involvement in union activities in northwest Indiana. Little did I know then that this encounter would mark the beginning of a lifelong journey alongside a remarkable leader. Tom's career with the staff of the United Steelworkers, which began in the late 80s, exemplified qualities that define his character. He was adroit, adept, assertive, and when necessary, aggressive, all in the pursuit of justice for workers. Tom's approach was always underpinned by fairness, thoughtfulness, and an unending capacity for reflection. His unwavering commitment to equity and fairness for workers was at the core of everything that he did. Yesterday, the United Steelworkers Union and the labor movement as a whole lost a true hero. Tom Conway's absence will leave a void that cannot be easily filled. Personally and professionally, his presence will be sorely missed. However, we must also remember that Tom's legacy lives on in the countless lives he touched and the transformative changes he brought about. Tom Conway leaves behind a labor movement that has been forever improved by his tireless dedication. He is a champion of the working class, a beacon of hope for those who need it the most, and a symbol of resilience in the face of adversity. As we mourn his loss, let us also celebrate the indomitable spirit of this extraordinary leader, whose legacy will continue to inspire us to fight for justice, equity, and fairness for workers everywhere. As we carry forward his legacy, may we continue to strive for the better world that he envisioned, where every worker is treated with dignity and respect. Tom's memory will be cherished in our hearts, and his legacy will endure as a beacon of hope and inspiration for generations to come. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Walton, for doing that. He was a friend, and he will be missed.
Very much so.
Proclamation certificates 12807-23.
A proclamation recognizing William T. Hillgrove and his more than 50 years of dedicated service in sports broadcasting sponsored by Councilmember Katina and all other members of council.
As a kid, growing up in Pittsburgh, I was honored and privileged to have a variety of people in radio listening to them. You didn't, you might not know the face, but you knew the voice. For instance, who can forget Myron Cope?
Yoey.
Double yoey. Who can forget John Signa? Who can forget Fred Hansberger? The list goes on and on. There's just so many voices that were on the radio, and this man standing next to me is a voice that I treasured when I was going to Pitt, walking up Cardiac Hill to the old stadium, listening to this man broadcast the Pitt games. So without further ado, I'd like to get into the actual proclamation, because what he's here tonight doing, I mean, celebrating 50 years of being a personality on radio, it's, you think about 50 years, how much, how long that is in broadcasting, how long that actually is in a job. It's an eternity. And Mr. Hillgrove's been here throughout good times and bad times. I'm sure he's had to take a lot of abuse, unfortunately, for some of the, some of the things that he had to call, unfortunately, as broadcasting, but that's what he served, that's what he basically signed up to do. So whereas a good career is a long-lasting career, when there is every competition doing a good job, you're part of the elite, and that's the most important thing. That's a quote by Blanca Vlasic, and that depicts the true essence of Mr. Bill Hillgrove and his more than 50 years of dedicated service as a sports broadcaster, radio personality, and sports journalist on radio and TV. Mr. Hillgrove's storied career in broadcasting can be traced back to his days as a student at Central Catholic. After the completion of WQED's newly constructed studio adjacent to Central Catholic in 1952, the studio was looking for part-time volunteers. Mr. Hillgrove's father, an electrician, thought it would be a great opportunity for his son to learn more about the business. With the encouragement of his father and the principal at the time, Brother Frederick John, he embarked on an unexpectedly different career path. In addition to his development at WQED, Mr. Hillgrove also attended the Pittsburgh Diocesan Radio and TV School, led by Sister Rosalie of the Charity Order. The school was located in Cathedral Mansions, just around the quarter from Central. Mr. Hillgrove credits the early years at WQED and the Pittsburgh Diocesan Radio and TV School for exposing him to the industry and sparking his passion that set the foundation for his remarkable career. Mr. Hillgrove's first job was a disc jockey with WKJF, now known as KDK FM, as 93.7 The Fan, and in 1968, he joined WTA TV as the station's booth announcer. A year later, he swapped jobs with the WTA radio announcer, Dal Taylor, wishing to get back into radio. In the mid-1960s, Mr. Hillgrove served for a short period of time as proprietor, the name given to the host as "of the place," a television show on WQED Channel 13. There was a coffee-style format, and Mr. Hillgrove was hired as Pitt basketball's play-by-play announcer. Impressed with his sports knowledge and broadcasting prowess, the university named him color analyst for the football team the following year. Whereas he's been highly respected throughout his hometown, he was handpicked by the Pittsburgh Steelers owner, Dan Rooney, to replace the retired Jack Fleming as the team's new play-by-play announcer, after serving for many years alongside famous color broadcaster Myron Cope. Double yoey, double yoey. His Steeler broadcast partners now include former Steelers players Craig Wolfley and Max Starks. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Allegheny County Council, President Pat Katina, Vice President John Paul Mary, Sam DeMarco, Bethany Hallam, Jack Pacowski, Suzanne Filiagi, Anita Pritsio, Tom Dewar, Nick Fittulis, Michelle Nakareti-Chapkus, Bob Macy, Councilman Walton, Paul Klein, Bob Paul Messina, and Alvin Bennett do hereby recognize that Mr. William Hillgrove has done for over 50 years in the sports broadcasting. Mr. Hillgrove is a cherished member of community, where he has created a huge name for himself due to his longevity and continuous dedication to his prolific career. This council truly congratulates him as he enters his 55th season of Pitt's basketball, 50th season of Pitt football, and 30th season with the Pittsburgh Steelers. In witness thereof, I, President of Council Patrick Katina, affix this seal to 26th day of September 2023.
When I started, the Dead Sea wasn't even sick. I'm blessed for a kid from Garfield to be able to ply his trade in his hometown for all these years. What can I say? I mean, you know, and Garfield, you know, we have four famous people, and at the risk of sounding political, Rich Fitzgerald, Harry Greb, the great boxer, Frankie Gorshin, the wonderful entertainer, and a guy named Joe Senegal. Now, if you're not familiar with that name, Joe founded Costco. So we have a Mount Rushmore in Garfield, but I really have a lot of people to thank. My wife of 58 years, Rosette. The secret to a long marriage: ballroom dancing twice a week. She goes Tuesdays, I go Thursdays. I have a lot of people to thank. All the people at Pitt over the years, the Rooney family, the fans, you know, I mean, okay, sometimes when there's a loss, I get some of the blame, and maybe I deserve it. I don't know. But I do, and I will tell you this, I was so glad the Steelers were able to beat the Raiders, because our journey home was a bit of a detour. You haven't lived until you spent five hours in a dark airplane on a tarmac in Kansas City, but we've survived that, and we're ready to move forward. I'd like to thank my partners through the years, and you mentioned Mr. Cope, and, you know, the current guys and the late Tunch Ilkin. You know, I could be here for a long time thanking a lot of people, but, you know, every effort is a team effort, and so if one individual gets recognized, so be it, but it takes a lot of people who helped to get him or her there. And I'd like to thank them as well. I'd like to thank County Council and President Katina and all the members. I appreciate this. It's a thrill for a kid from Garfield to be able to go to downtown Pittsburgh and stand up and be recognized for a lot of lucky years of achievement. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Where are we gonna do it? Right up front? Up front?
Yep.
Friend, join us?
Sure. What you don't know is we were together seven years before we got married.
I guess she missed the Daryl Hesse.
Oh, gosh.
We enjoyed it especially.
It couldn't exist. Not in this day of social media.
But the language still exists.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Bill.
It was a stag in sports.
You should have heard them guys.
They was all guys.
Then all of a sudden...
Jared, you can continue with the rest of the proclamations.
12808-23 is a proclamation recognizing Wilkinsburg Athletic Association's youth football and cheerleading teams and proclaiming September 14, 2023, as Wilkinsburg Athletic Association Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Hallam. 12809-23 is a proclamation recognizing Dr. Leon Haley for his more than 50 years of dedication to serving and improving the quality of life in Allegheny County, sponsored by Councilmember Walton. And 12810-23 is a proclamation recognizing Cameron Aziz for being awarded Boy Scouts of America Life Saving and Meritorious Action Award, sponsored by Councilmember Pritsio.
Thank you. And our public comment on agenda items?
With several, first up is Adeline Bijani.
Not here.
Next up is Kulamar Daliwal.
Not here.
Yep. Next up is Olivia Perfetti.
Not here.
Next up again, Maria Guido.
Not here.
Not here. Next up is President Judge Kim Berkeley Clark.
Judge Clark.
I don't care.
Yep.
So President Katina and members of County Council, good evening. My name is Kim Berkeley Clark. I am here in my capacity as the President Judge of the Fifth Judicial District and as a lifelong resident of Allegheny County to implore you to vote no on the motion regarding Schuman Center. It has been two years since the state revoked the county's, I'm sorry, I'm just getting over COVID, county's license to operate a detention facility, and during this time, the court has struggled and has been unable to keep our children and communities safe. We do not have enough detention beds available to detain children who are charged with serious violent or gun offenses or who are at risk for self-harm and are waiting for treatment beds. Judges have issued orders for children to be detained, but there are often no detention beds available. We have no choice but to return these children home with electronic monitoring, often against the wishes of well-meaning parents. Children are removing monitors at an unprecedented rate, and there is nothing we can do about it. They are free to ignore a judge's conditions of supervision and probation and to run around with guns without consequence, and the results have been disastrous. I know there is a concern about what happened in Luzern County, but that will not and cannot happen here in Allegheny County for three reasons. First and most importantly, detention services will be program-funded. In other words, the amount of payment will not be determined by the number of children detained, but by the licensed capacity of the detention center, and this eliminates any financial motivation to detain children. Second, unlike in Luzern County, children in Allegheny County are always represented by an attorney. And third, simply, the judges in Luzern County were corrupt. They went to prison, and I can assure you that the judges in Allegheny County will only order children into detention who present a risk to the safety of the community or themselves who are at risk to its gone. So why Adelphi and why a private provider? It's extremely difficult for a county to provide detention services, as evidenced by the revocation of Schuman's license to operate, and many counties rely on private nonprofit providers to provide these services. Adelphi has decades of experience serving at-risk children across the continuum, everything from community-based services to secure residential programs. They've been named Residential Program of the Year and unprecedented 10 times by the Pennsylvania Juvenile Court Justice Commission. 60 counties contract with Adelphi, as well as the Commonwealth, who contracts with them for secure residential beds. They are experts in providing trauma-informed care and evidence-based program, and the services that children receive in detention will dramatically improve. I want to share with you two real cases that illustrate the need for the detention center. In June of this year, a youth was charged with possession of a firearm and receiving stolen property. He was released on monitoring.
Can you wrap it up, Judge?
Yes, I'm at the end. Released non-electronic monitoring as no detention beds were available. Two weeks later, he was charged as an adult with aggravated assault and gun possession for a shooting incident where the victim was shot. He is now detained in the county jail. The youth had a previous adjudication for possession of a firearm by a minor. I have another incident, but I know my time is up. I would ask for your indulgence, because I think it's important. Last week, a youth was shot in the back and transported to a hospital where he died later that day. Two weeks prior, the youth was charged with possession of a firearm and other charges. He had previous...
If you could summarize, I'm sorry. I have to treat everyone fairly.
All right. So no detention beds were available for him, and so one week before his death, he allowed his EHM bracelet to die, and a warrant was issued, and now he's dead. If we continue to delay, more children will be harmed, and our communities will continue to be unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next up is Brad Karinski. Not here.
He is here.
He is?
Good evening, members of council. Brad Karinski, formerly Chief Legal Counsel for Chelsea Wagner for 10 years, during which time I reviewed probably to the detriment of my eyes thousands of county contracts. And I'm here in my capacity as a private citizen, want to make that clear. I am a law clerk with Judge Wagner in the Family Division, but I'm speaking as Brad Karinski, private citizen, about something that I know about, which is county government and the county charter. I don't know much about juvenile justice. I don't pretend to know whether Adelphi is good or bad. That's for you folks and others who know more than I to decide. But what I can say is, under the county charter, if there is a use of county property, it has to come before this body to vote on that use, like we do with the Picklesburg Bridge, like we do with drilling in the county parks, like we do with the GoApe ropes course, because if a county executive can circumvent this body for a good reason, for a serious reason, that is a bad precedent, particularly for a body that is struggling, week in and week out, to make itself relevant. The taxpayers have entrusted you with the safeguarding of county property, which, mind you, is vast, with thousands of acres, millions of dollars of real estate. That's important for you to vote on, and this sets a bad precedent, and it's a bad precedent for a county executive in a morado. It's a bad precedent for a county executive rocky. It's a bad precedent 20 years from now, and it's never been our precedent. So I implore you to ensure that this matter is voted on by you, and hopefully you have a solution to the juvenile justice problem, but it does have to involve you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next up is Sam Schmidt.
My name is Sam Schmidt. Looking at my notes here and thinking about how I want to approach this. I am here to leave public comment and implore you to vote yes in suing against the privatization of Schuman. There's so many reasons why privatizing a child detention facility should never happen, but we'll start with Adelphi's track record of abuse. Judge Clark mentioned that they've been in operation for decades. That means they have decades' worth of child abuse charges against them and currently have existing class-action lawsuits against them. That abuse is both physical and sexual abuse. These kids are the kids most affected, the most vulnerable in our society, most affected by capitalism, poverty, and have already been failed dozens of times by the adults in their lives. Setting them up with a situation like this is literally just grooming them for the adult carceral system. Nothing about Adelphi detention centers is reformative, nothing about it is protective. Imagine if you were a parent in this situation, knowing that your vulnerable child, who needs this added support, is being abused in these conditions and not being able to afford to sue on their behalf. County Council has the ability to do that. County Council has the ability to, like the previous speaker said, take advantage of the Home Rule Charter, enforce it, and make sure that you are protecting county property and being part of the decision-making for county property. This isn't in alignment with our values for equity and justice. I understand that there is maybe an issue of youth being outside of school, not having the resources that they need, but a carceral system for children is absolutely not the answer. We can provide communities, we can create those systems of care for these kids to help reform them instead of condemning them to this type of continued abuse. Speaking personally, I can tell you that as a child, if you are abused by a trusted adult in your life, whether sexually or physically, that abuse and the trauma therein stays with you forever, stays with them for their entire adult lives, and these are the citizens that we're producing if we're condemning these kids to the abuse of Adelphi. So I encourage you to think twice about this and stand up for the kids and stand up for the use of county property. Thanks so much.
Next up is Tanisha Long.
I am deeply unsurprised to see Judge Clark here arguing for the opening of Schuman, because jailers will always want more jails. So I would take that testimony with a grain of salt, because that's how you have a job. Judge Clark says that judges are not corrupt, but she's here arguing that we violate our county's laws and Home Rule Charter. That's pretty corrupt to me. We have lawsuits against the court at the Abolitionist Law Center that say differently, that judges aren't corrupt. We've won lawsuits for things like court access and violating and keeping with our county's laws. So judges are corrupt in Allegheny County. We also know that Allegheny County has a practice of overcharging children so that they fall within that Act 33 and are charged with adults. I would like to remind people that anecdotal stories do not disprove systemic issues, and 90 to 100% of the kids in the Allegheny County jail are black boys. This is not a political issue. This is an issue of following our county charter and following our county laws. Detention does not save lives. It does not have a positive effect on outcomes. We have research that shows that. When it comes to our county's kids, these are our most treasured assets, and we have the ability to change their trajectory for the rest of their lives. And as sitting county council members, I beg you to listen to your constituents. I do not always agree with all of you. I do not always get along with all of you. I do not agree with the way you interact with the public, like asking your constituents if they're stupid on Twitter. There's a lot of things that happen on this county council that make me deeply angry and upset, but the one thing I hope we all can agree on is that we have laws, we have a county charter, we are under a Home Rule Charter, our kids are our most valuable assets, we have a responsibility to decide how county property is used, we have a responsibility to figure out how to confront this issue of, you know, youth violence, how to stem recidivism. This is our job, and just because we have so far failed in our job does not mean that we should not take the time to do better and guide it toward a better future. It does not mean that we fall back on things that have proven not to work, and it absolutely does not mean that we sell our children to a company that has a decades-long history of sexual and physical abuse of children. There are federal lawsuits that back this claim up, and you can look Adelphi up under the various names that they have used, and that's how you will find them. So please vote to follow our county's laws. Thank you.
Thank you. We had someone sign up late. Does anyone object to letting him speak? Hearing none, no objections. Mr. Redwood?
Yeah, Carl Redwood from the Hill District in Pittsburgh. I'm short. Basically, privatizing Schuman Center will not make our community safer. That's the most important thing to understand. Privatization of a detention center will not do anything to resolve the bigger question that Judge Clark is kind of raising, and that's, they say they don't have anywhere for people to go. That's their claim, but actually, we do have people in the county jail right now, young people in the county jail right now. So that's not really the issue. This privatization issue has sidestepped U.S. Council in order to create a contract with a for-profit corporation, and they do this all over the state. They go to entities and they try to get contracts so they can build up their business, which is to be a private prison. But the key thing I want to leave with is that privatization of Schuman will not make our community safer. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. I believe you're, okay. Approval of minutes, 12811-23.
A motion approved of minutes at the July 5, 2023, regular meeting of council.
Make a motion to approve...
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Presentation of appointments, 12805-23.
Approving the reappointment of LaSance Heard Montgomery to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review for a term to expire on September 8, 2026, sponsored by President Katina.
That will go to Appointment Review. Unfinished business, Committee on Appointment Review for the second reading, 12754-23.
Approving the appointment of Michael Souley to the Board of Property Assessments, Appeals and Review for a term to run through August 15, 2026, sponsored by President Katina.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 14, 2023, and affirmatively recommended Mr. Souley to the Board of Property Assessments, Appeals and Review.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion?
President.
Go ahead.
I just want to follow up to comments that I made in the committee meeting. Since these board appointments, which are very influential in our county, all of these different agencies and functions, they do not have term limits. And the mechanism that council has in order to let new voices and new ideas join these boards is for us to occasionally say no. So I'll be casting some no votes tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Hallam?
Yeah, Mike, I love you, but I have a policy about voting on any appointment that exceeds the first two years of the next executive's term, so I'm going to be voting no, but no, it's not about you. Some of these other noes are about them. This one isn't about you, okay?
Anyone else this evening? Hearing no one else, take a roll call vote, please. Jared?
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
No.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fettulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
No.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio? Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 12, no's 3. The appointment passes.
12756-23.
Approving the appointment of Timothy Maury to the Accountability Conduct and Ethics Commission for a term to expire on August 15, 2028, sponsored by Councilmember DiMarco.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 14, 2023, and returned this appointment without recommendation of Mr. Maury to the Accountability Conduct and Ethics Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I would just like to clarify, this appointment here is a caucus pick. Mr. Maury previously served on the Eighth Commission. The Eighth Commission is comprised of three Democrats and two Republicans. In his previous service, the Democrats had made him the chair of the commission, indicating how highly they thought of him. Mr. Maury is a 30-plus-year incumbent on Bethel Park Council, has an unquestionable reputation. And again, as a council or a caucus pick, I would like to urge my fellow council members to support this appointment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Councilman Dewar?
Very, very briefly. So Tim's been my council member since 1996. I was born in 1995. He's been council president of Bethel Park since 1996 as well. So the year he was elected to council, he was also elected council president. Tim and I don't always get along politically. He backed my predecessor over me for county council in 2019. But in his capacity as the council president and council member for Bethel Park Council, he has never done anything but uphold Bethel Park's reputation to the highest standard while serving in that capacity. Working with him has always been incredibly professional during my time working with him as a council member and as my time as his constituent, as a constituent of Ward 8 for the entirety of my life. So for folks who have issues with him, I appreciate you bringing those issues up during the Appointment Review Committee. But I, as someone who knows Tim in his capacity, working inside the municipality where I grew up, where I still live, I still live in Ward 8, you know, I will certainly be casting a yes vote tonight, knowing, having seen his depth of work throughout his time serving our municipality over the last 27 years. So, thank you.
At this point in time, is there any other comment before I make my comment? Okay. Council, okay. Councilwoman Filiagi?
Thank you. And as Councilman DiMarco pointed out, that this is a caucus pick, and I'm a little confused, being newer, as to how that cannot be voted on in the affirmative. If nothing else, that's how the rules go, and congeniality is also a part of being on a council, on a body. And I take that very seriously. And I also wanted to just tell some people who did not have the benefit of hearing the interview of Mr. Maury and who did a great job, because I was struck by his knowledge of the commission, and that's a bit of a niche position, and it's a very serious but not very celebrated position, the Ethics Commission. But I think it's coming into need more and more every day, I think, in every governmental body, is any sort of organization. Ethics matter. And this gentleman, who served before and served well, and again, as Councilman DiMarco said, was voted to the chair by a bipartisan group of people. Even as a Republican, he was the chair of that commission. And so I was struck by his knowledge, by how seriously he took the job, and by the fact that there seems to be no agenda. And I'm sorry that it appears that people are ignoring his qualifications for other reasons that they have yet to explain, and that is troubling. I will absolutely be voting yes, and I encourage everyone else to do the same. Thank you.
Councilman Fittulis?
Thank you. During the committee process, I had asked Tim Maury a question. I was one of the few members of council that was on council when he was on the Eighth Commission prior to this new appointment. And we had discussed the fact that he was a conflict of interest with a former councilperson on a case. And he acknowledged the fact that he was a conflict of interest. But he said that he had asked the other Eighth Commission members if it was okay, if he was to continue. And they said yes. Well, quite frankly, when you're a conflict of interest, it's not okay. You have to go by the Ethics Commission, is what the real issue is. When you're a conflict of interest, you are a true conflict of interest, whether somebody gives you permission or not. And he was asked during the committee meeting, would you do it again? And he said, absolutely. So that was pretty much the wrong answer, quite frankly, but I think he would have known better with his experience. When you have a conflict of interest, you specifically must go by ethics rules as far as that. I've done it myself in the past. I knew I was a conflict of interest in some of these issues here on council. And it was no question. And it was no question. There was no question.
Mr. President?
So, sorry. Councilman Fittulis is still speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear him anymore.
Yeah, he's still, he's still speaking. I'm not going to let him finish.
Okay. Well, anyway, I think I've made my point. I think I'll just finish with that. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would just like to clarify, point of clarification here. Councilman Fittulis was using the term "conflict of interest." There was no such thing as a conflict of interest. There was an accusation that there had been a bias because someone had known somebody. And the Eighth Commission did a thorough investigation examining communications, and they came back and dismissed that complaint and said there was no justification for it. I actually have it, if you'd like me to share it or enter it into the record. The results of that complaint, it was number 31 from the Eighth Commission, because as members of council, we get copies of the findings of these. So I have the actual copies of the findings, both number 30, which was the one which someone referred to, and this one here, number 31. So again, there was no conflict of interest whatsoever. It was the accusation had been that there was a bias, and the Eighth Commission itself, again, Democrat majority ruled that there was nothing to the complaint and dismissed it.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing no one else, take a roll call vote, please. Jared?
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
No.
Mr. Bekowski?
No.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittulis?
No.
Ms. Hallam?
No.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
No.
Mr. Paul Mary?
No.
Mr. Paul Messina?
No.
Ms. Pritsio? Mr. Walton?
My vote is predicated on several things. One...
This is time for the vote. You had, we had public comment. Now is the time for the vote.
So you're not going to let me speak?
Now is the time for the vote. It's a simple up or down vote.
My vote is predicated...
It's a simple up or down vote.
My vote is predicated on several facts.
It's a simple up or down vote.
One...
You're out of order, Councilman. Please suspend.
So...
Please suspend. Please suspend. This meeting's recessed. Thank you, Councilman Walton. I'll call the meeting back to order. Councilman Walton, are you ready to vote yet?
My vote is predicated...
I guess we're going back into recess. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to ask if our solicitor could give us an opinion on how we can move forward with the business of this meeting when an individual council member is clearly attempting to obstruct it?
If the chair directs him to be out of order, he must follow the chair's ruling and be silent at that particular point. If he wants to appeal the chair's ruling, then he can do so, and it would be a vote of council as to whether the chair was correct.
Thank you. President Katina, did you roll him out of order?
I did.
Okay.
I extended the suspend.
So would you like to cast your vote now, Mr. Walton?
Mr. President, I fully understand Robert's rules of order and the ability to challenge the decision of the chair.
Would you like to challenge the decision of the chair?
My vote is predicated...
Would you like to challenge the...
My vote is predicated...
Here, we're going back into recess.
Who's running the meeting here? Is it the president of council or is it Councilwoman Hallam here, who seems to be telling you repeatedly what to do?
Please direct, please do not direct questions towards me. I asked a question of the solicitor, and I am asking for the follow-up procedure on what we do.
You're telling him what to do.
When your colleague, I'm asking him what the process is.
If the rules were followed. We have simple rules.
Law and order matters in this room, Councilmember DiMarco.
We have simple rules.
It'd be nice if you remembered that.
That need to be followed.
You can just proceed.
We all agree to what those rules should be. When the vote is called for, it's a simple up or down vote. That's not the time for public comment or discussion. Public comment and discussion is called before, at that point in time, when we discuss. When I ask for comment, that is your time, basically, to state your opinion, one way or another, yea or nay. Councilman Walton had that opportunity to do so. He chose not to. He wants to make a speech during the actual vote. According to council rules, that is not allowed. So if he wants to vote on the, if he wants to vote on the bill, he can vote on the bill. But I'm not going to allow public comment when this is now not the time for that. It's that simple. So we're going to, I mean, if he refuses to cast his vote, we're just going to move on. So at this point in time, the meeting's back in order, and if you'd like to vote, Councilman Walton, you can vote one way or the other, but if not, we're moving on.
My vote is predicated...
Okay, we're moving on then. Thank you.
I apologize, President Katina, I need to call you as well.
Okay.
On the motion approved, yea or nay?
What are we, which one are we? Tim Maury, no.
We have eyes four, no's 10. With one member not casting a vote, the appointment fails.
Okay. So moving on, 12757-23.
Approving the reappointment of J. Eric French to the Allegheny County Conservation District Board for a term to be effective through December 31, 2024, sponsored by the chief executive.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 14, 2023, and affirmatively recommended the reappointment of J. Eric French. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
No.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yep.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
I will take the appropriate action to address the violation of my rights as a member of council on the previous vote.
I'm ruling you out of order.
In this instance...
I'm ruling you out of order. Please suspend.
In this instance, I vote yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's 1. The appointment passes.
12758-23.
Approving the reappointment of Jenna R. Kramer to the Allegheny County Conservation District Board for a term to be effective through December 31, 2024, sponsored by the chief executive.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 14, 2023, and affirmatively recommended Ms. Kramer to this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Jared, please take roll.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
No.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yep.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 14, no's 1. The appointment passes.
12759-23.
Approving the appointment of Holly A. Douglas to the Minority Women and Disadvantaged Business Enterprise for a term to be effective through December 31, 2026, sponsored by the chief executive.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 14, 2023, and affirmatively recommended Ms. Holly Douglas to this appointment. I'd like to make that a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Jared, please take roll.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yea.
Mr. Bekowski?[1653.96]
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hallam?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fourteen, noes one. The appointment passes. 12798-23. Approving the appointment of Michelle Pianzo to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review for a term to expire December 31, 2025, sponsored by the chief executive. Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 14, 2023, and affirmatively recommended Ms. Michelle Pianzo to the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, please take roll. On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fifteen, noes zero. The appointment passes. Committee on Budget and Finance for the second reading, 1268-0-23. An ordinance of the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending the Allegheny County Code of Ordinances, Division Four, entitled Finances, by the addition of a new Chapter 492 entitled Criminal Justice Funding Parity in order to provide for adequate and fair representation of indigent defendants charged with criminal offenses within the county, sponsored by Councilmember Hallam. This is going to be re-referred back to the Budget and Finance Committee. 12791-23. A resolution of the county of Allegheny amending the grants and special accounts budget for 2023, submission 02-23, sponsored by the chief executive. Councilman Paul Messina?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met September 13th and affirmatively recommended this resolution. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call vote. On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fifteen, noes zero. The bill passes. 12793-23. A resolution ratifying certain year-end transfers pursuant to Section 805.03 of the Administrative Code, sponsored by the chief executive. Councilman Paul Messina?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Finance Committee met September 13th and affirmatively recommended this resolution. I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing, no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call vote. On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fifteen, noes zero. The bill passes. Committee on Economic Development and Housing for the second reading, 12792-23. A resolution providing for a program of temporary exemption from county real property taxes for improvements, including repairs, construction, or reconstruction made on industrial, commercial, or business property in a deteriorated area in the city of Pittsburgh, County of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, pursuant to Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, sponsored by the chief executive. Councilman Bekowski?
The Committee on Economic Development and Housing met on September 13th and affirmatively recommended this resolution to council. I make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call vote. On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yep.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fifteen, noes zero. The bill passes. Committee on Public Safety for the second reading, 12789-23. An ordinance of the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing the county's acceptance of the donation of 1,475 feet of five-inch fire hose from Seville Volunteer Fire Company, sponsored by the chief executive. Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Committee on Public Safety met on September 19, 2023, and affirmatively, affirmatively recommended this to the full council, and I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call vote. On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina? Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fifteen, noes zero. The bill passes. 12790-23. An ordinance of the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing the county's acceptance of the donation of 50 Miller Revolution harnesses, 50 Miller Turbo T-Bac personal fall emitters, 10 double-back-biter with soft stop, and 10 single-back-biter lanyard with soft stop from the United States Steel Corporation, sponsored by the chief executive. Councilmember Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, the Committee on Public Safety met on September 19th and affirmatively, affirmatively recommended this to the full council, and I would like to make that record, uh, that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, please take roll. On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yep.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fifteen, noes zero. The bill passes. 12, Committee on Public Works for the second reading, 12784-23. An ordinance authorizing the county of Allegheny through the Department of Public Works and the Law Department to acquire by condemnation a temporary construction easement over one parcel of land identified by the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate as Block and Lot 1087P310, required for Bailey's Run Reconstruction Project at Station 166+25, located at Bailey's Run Road, East Deer Township, Allegheny County, a project included in the 2023 Capital Road Program, and to take such further actions may be necessary under applicable law, including but not limited to the eminent domain code, sponsored by the chief executive. Councilman Bekowski?
The Committee on Public Works met on September 13th and affirmatively recommended this ordinance to council. I make that motion.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. Jared, please take roll. On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yep.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fifteen, noes zero. The bill passes. 12785-23. An ordinance authorizing the county of Allegheny through the Department of Public Works and the Law Department to acquire by condemnation a permanent right of way in fee simple and a temporary construction easement over one parcel of land identified by the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate as Block and Lot 1570M323, required for replacement of deteriorated bridge designated as the Douglas Run Bridge Number 19, located at Roundhill Road, Elizabeth Township, Allegheny County, and to take such further actions may be necessary under applicable law, including but not limited to the eminent domain code, sponsored by the chief executive. Thank you. Councilmember Bekowski?
The Committee on Public Works met on September 13th and affirmatively recommended this ordinance to council. I make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. Jared, please take roll. On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina? Yes. Ayes fifteen, noes zero. The bill passes. We'll now have liaison reports. Any liaison reports this evening?
Oh, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Um, the Board of Elections will meet next do-do-do-do Monday to certify the results of the House District 21 Special Election, and I will provide everyone with an update at the next meeting after that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing, no one else. We'll move on to new business. Ordinances and resolutions, 12812-23. An ordinance of the county of Allegheny, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending and supplementing the provisions of Article 1013 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County, entitled Political Activity: Accountability, Conduct, and Ethics Code, in order to establish a mechanism for review and investigation of campaign finance reports filed by candidates for county-elected offices by the Allegheny County Ethics Commission, sponsored by Councilmember Dewar. Uh, that will go to the Committee on Government Reform. New business motions, 12813-23. A motion to the Council of Allegheny County directing council solicitor to file suit against the Allegheny County Chief Executive and/or the Fifth Judicial District Court of Common Pleas, seeking a declaratory judgment regarding conditional use of county-owned properties, specifically the former Schuman Center site, sponsored by council members Hallam, Bekowski, Pritsio, Katina, Klein, and Paul Messina. Thank you. Councilmember Hallam?
Thank you, President Katina. Um, I just wanna, you know, I know we had a lot of public commenters about this tonight, but I just want to make something very, very clear to everyone. This vote tonight is not about what you think about Adelphi as a company, right? I have thoughts on that, but that is not what this is about. This vote is not about what you see as the solution to juvenile justice in Allegheny County. This is not about that. This is not even about what you think should happen with Schuman. So get all of those ideas and all of those opinions out of your head, because what this is about is the county executive and the courts conspiring together to attempt to supersede the authority that is given to us as council members under the county charter. That is all this is about. If you vote yes, you believe that the charter is the law of the land in Allegheny County, that the charter is what we are to follow as council members, that the charter is what delineates our powers as council, what delineates the powers of the county executive, and I have read the charter back and forth hundreds of times, and it is very clear and very explicit and unambiguous about what our authority is when it comes to permitting the use of county property. I believe it to be highly unethical that a sitting judge would come in front of us today and attempt to influence a legislative body, especially about a lawsuit that would very likely come in front of the Court of Common Pleas in which she is the sitting president judge. That raises very serious ethical concerns to me, and I hope it does for all of you, especially as she sits up there and talks about there being no corruption in Allegheny County and no corrupt judges in Allegheny County, and especially when we're hearing all this narrative about this, this is the courts and not the executive branch, and that makes it okay. The courts cannot give away county property as they see fit. The county executive and his administration cannot give away or permit the use of county property without bringing it in front of us. If they truly wanted to accomplish what If they truly wanted to accomplish what they are alleging that they want to accomplish with this contract, all that had to be done was it was brought in front of council for a vote, like every other use of county property that we vote on, meeting after meeting after meeting. But they know what they're doing is wrong. They know what they're doing is illegal, and that is why they attempted to illegally supersede our authority in doing so. That is a spit in the face, not just to me, not just to, you know, the people of Allegheny County, but to each and every one of you sitting up here, too. And you should be as angry as I am. So I hope that you will join me in voting yes on this motion to file suit to get a declaratory judgment where basically the courts will say, "Yens can't do this. If you want to do it, bring it in front of council." So I ask for your yes vote on this, and I again implore you to remember, this is not about Adelphi, this is not about Schuman, this is not about juvenile justice at all. This is about our authority under the charter, and if we don't follow the charter, what are we going to follow? So, President Katina, I would like to move to approve this motion, and I would ask for a second from my colleagues.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. At this point in time, before we have discussion, I'd like to see if council wants to go in, since this obviously is involving litigation, potential litigation, I'd like to know if council would like to go into an executive session with our solicitor to get any questions answered.
Yes.
Yes? We, okay. We're going to go into executive session then in the back room, so we'll be back momentarily. Thank you. Okay. We're back from executive session, obviously. We discussed some questions about the litigation before us. At this point in time, is there any further discussion? Councilman DeMarco.
Yeah, Mr. President. I think one of the things I think I lost sight of before was when we talked about this, and we talked about county council approving the use of real estate, which we do have oversight and which we have responsibility for using, and I agree with that. But this isn't the use of a third party. This is government entity. This is the courts using this. And we've never approved, that I can recall, the use of county property by other government entities. For example, when the elections office over on the sixth floor in the county office building, they renovated the third floor and they moved them down there. They never asked us any of that. And Adelphi is not, they're not using the facility. The courts are. They're just doing the management, which should be no different than when, like, our food service vendors at the jail. They don't, they don't have to come before us and has to have to give approval for them to use the jail to be the food service vendor or the other vendors. And I think that makes this sort of a little bit of a different case. This isn't us turning this over to a private entity. What we're having here is we're having a food fight with the administration over county properties being used by another government entity, and I'm not aware that they've ever come before us, at least in the eight years I've been on council, you know, for that. Do you recall that?
What? When we, when we've entered into, when we've done things for the courts, do you mean?
No, when, when we've ever had to approve real estate for the use of county real estate by another government entity.
Well, it, I'm not aware that, I mean, if we talk about any real estate, I mean, I guess, did who signed the contract, would I guess would be my question. Is it the courts that signed the contract, or is it the administration that would have signed the contract?
I don't know. You were the one that was obtaining the contract, I thought you said.
I don't, I don't have the contract. I asked for the contract, put in, actually, a right-to-know request for the contract. And I've, I mean, we tried to reach out to the county manager earlier today to get the coun, get the contract, and we still haven't had a chance to review it. I'm going by basically what I'm either reading out there in the papers or basically what I'm hearing from other people, because unfortunately, none of that has been provided to this, to me or any, I don't think any member of this council.
Well, so you said we reached out, you reached out today, but yet Friday in the newspaper you were there saying that you were going to file a lawsuit, you know, for this. I mean, should we have reached out? Was that prior?
Point of order. We're getting far afield of the agenda, and I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
I'll second that motion.
There's no discussion.
You're voting, you're moving to end discussion. Okay. And there's a second? Okay. So Jared, take a roll call vote on that specifically.
On the motion to end debate, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco.
No.
Mr. Dewar.
No.
Ms. Filiagi.
No.
Mr. Fattulis.
No.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
No.
Ms. Nakaradi-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
No.
President Katina.
I, we're, even though we're ending debate, I still haven't had a chance to make public comment myself. So I'm going to say yes. Whoa, 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 whoa.
I said yes. Didn't you hear it? Yes? I can spell it for you.
Oh, come on.
Yes, yes.
Yes. I'm glad I made you laugh. See, we're still friends even though we argue. Eyes nine, nays six. The motion passes.
Okay, we've ended debate. Now the ruling on the main, the ruling on the main motion. Please take a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve the bill, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
I apologize. That's a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco.
No.
Mr. Dewar.
No.
Ms. Filiagi.
So, Michael, if I'm going to abstain, and I believe when you abstain that you can make a comment, and I'm abstaining because I do not believe, I think there's still a lot of questions. I do not believe that we've been given enough time. I'm sorry, solicitor, I'm. Is that right, that I may make a comment when I abstain?
Explain your reason for abstaining.
My reason for abstaining is that I do believe that it is premature. I do not believe the process has been completely, we haven't done our due diligence. I believe there are members of council that are, that require more information, I being one of them, and we would like an opportunity to explore this. So for that reason, I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Fattulis.
No.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Petty politics, no.
Ms. Nakaradi-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
I'm abstaining.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes nine, nays four. With two abstentions, the bill passes.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll now move on to 12814-23.
A motion to the council of Allegheny County authorizing the execution of a three-year contract with Henderson Brothers Incorporated for the placement of certain insurance policies sponsored by Councilmember Paul Mary.
Councilman Paul Mary? I believe this is going to go to the executive committee. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Notification of contracts, anything? Nothing, Jared?
Uh, no, we have no notification of contracts.
Public comment on general items.
We have several. First up is Kent Bay.
I talked with him fourth meeting, I know he said.
Peace. Good evening. My name is Kent Bay. I'm a Morse American, citizen of the USA, military veteran, third generation, beginning with my grandfather who lived with his family in Hill District. I'm the founder of the Project Love Coalition. Our organization mission is to advocate on behalf of veterans and their families in the areas of housing, workforce development, and community building. The Project Love Coalition has been attempting to access resources from the county for a while now without any success. Specifically, Project Love Coalition's American Veterans Agro Housing Critical Development project for nearly seven years, Project Love Coalition has been trying to complete a small project to provide housing to veterans in crisis, but efforts have been denied or delayed. We started this project goal many years ago when the White House, under the Obama administration, sent a challenge to end veteran homelessness to all mayors across the nation in every city. We're requesting support from this county council, if possible, in the form of some letters of support and some technical assistance to get through your very arduous process to request funding. I would also like to mention, I would also like to mention a horrific incident involving a fallen veteran, Mr. William Hardison, who was recently murdered by 47 Pittsburgh police, 12 Allegheny County officers, 16 Allegheny County deputies swat for peacefully refusing to accept a piece of paper in the form of an eviction notice to vacate him from his family's home where he was paying rent in Garfield. A death 100% avoidable. The Project Love Coalition never thought we were asking for too much. We thought that we were asking for things available to, to any true American citizen that would, that would enable us to do what is right and good for all. We would like to work with the local government here, county government, and any other officials to help us in our mission to help veterans and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next up is Elias Khan.
Next.
Lisa Graves-Marcucci.
She's here.
Good evening. Thank you. On August 16th, 2023, the federal EPA proposed revisions to the Clean Air Act standards for hazardous air pollutants. This rule would require facilities like the Clayton Coke Works to install fence line monitoring for benzene and require that facility to clean up emissions through a corrective action plan if concentrations measured at the fence line get too high. Corrective action plans help reduce overall emissions, not just benzene, by addressing root causes of the excess emissions. The overall goal here, better air quality for plant workers and for the surrounding communities. As part of creating this new federal rule requirement, EPA requested U.S. Steel Clayton Coke Works to conduct six months' worth of fence line monitoring for benzene to better understand the fugitive emissions from the plant. The methods used by U.S. Steel for this rule were the same that we used that I brought to you in June, along with the Carnegie Mellon University Create Lab, and we did find out that Allegheny County Health Department did another 18-month study using the same type of monitoring. After that six-month period of monitoring by U.S. Steel, the average concentration measured at their fence line at the plant was 33.3 micrograms per cubic meter. That is 10 times greater than both the proposed action level in this new rule for benzene and California EPA's long-term health threshold, both of which, if you remember from in June when we presented, is three micrograms per cubic meter. As I mentioned, we also learned that Allegheny County Health Department did an 18-month benzene project, and they also have a stationary monitor in Liberty Borough, and I have a packet with all of the information. The bottom line is this: the monitoring results from all three of these benzene monitoring projects indicate that the main source for benzene is the Clayton Coke Works. And when you look at the toxic release inventory that U.S. Steel is required to submit to the federal government every year, looking at the 2021 numbers for benzene, all of Allegheny County's benzene, if you look at it through the TRI data, 97% of all of the county's benzene comes from that one facility. It's worth noting that these reported emissions to TRI are often underestimated, especially now that we can compare those numbers with the actual data at the fence line that U.S. Steel has now turned into the federal government. So what can we do about it? Very simple. There is an open comment period until Monday, October 2nd. In the packet, I have instructions on anyone, we've been passing this out in the region, anyone who'd like to comment, there are instructions on how to do that. We're urging folks to please support the benzene monitoring part of the rule.
Can you wrap it up, please?
This is it. We just are asking folks to take a look at the information and support keeping that benzene monitoring in place. Clearly, the Mon Valley and Allegheny County is in need of that. So I thank you for your time. Do I give this, or do I just?
You can give it to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next.
Next up is Meredith Felde.
Not here.
Scott Cornish.
Howdy, folks. If you could put your cell phones away for my three minutes, for my three-minute class, I'd appreciate it. Yeah, the teacher's here. Hello, and thank you for your time today. I appreciate having the opportunity to talk to you folks about what I find so dear to me at the Community College of Allegheny County. My name is Scott Cornish. I'm currently serving as department head of Humanities, and I teach in the Visual Arts Department. And that's at CCAC South Campus, which is in Councilman Macy's district. Like so many others in our region, I started my path in higher education at CCAC right out of high school. I went on to complete a dual bachelor's degree in visual art and education, and subsequently a master's of fine arts degree. Though I strayed far away from my educational, in my educational path, I have always called Pittsburgh my home. I consider myself a rich man. No, I don't have a lot of money in the bank right now, and you'll be thankful I'm not here to ask for a raise. My riches come from the ability for me to wake up every morning and know that I'm doing the thing that I love to do. I teach people how to be creative thinkers. Research links the study of humanities, film, dance, theater, music, philosophy, multimedia communication, and visual art to the cultivation of creativity, that elusive quality that our greatest leaders are set to have. Our courses cultivate critical thought. They stray away from concrete right or wrong answers. Sorry, I lost my place. And we, we favor a multiple solution-based approach rather than right or wrong answers. We teach creativity in the Humanities Department at CCAC. While our department serves the art, the graphic design, the multimedia, the music, the theater, and the film majors at CCAC, we also serve the general student population with the humanities electives required for majors, for all majors. While we understand the direct contribution of workforce development in our programs, it is important that the educational path of transfer students in our region is not neglected. I ask my students to be their best when they come into my classroom, yet I am conflicted because I know we can do better. I can perform my job responsibilities to a higher level, but I need your help. Supporting an increase of county contribution to CCAC would allow for greater investment in our transfer and services, service disciplines, such as the Humanities Department. It would allow CCAC to invest in the infrastructure needed to maintain our facilities and the educational rigor that our students deserve. I can speak directly to the needs of the department in which I teach. We have a fantastic visual arts program at CCAC, which spans all four campuses. We went from having eight full-time faculty in visual art a few years ago, and we're down to four now. We have a studio at South Campus, which has now been closed for three years because it lacks the proper ventilation for safe, for a safe learning environment. We have a disintegrating studio at North Campus.
Can you wrap it up?
Wrapping it up. We have a disintegrating studio at North Campus, which desperately needs a new floor, some equipment, and some paint. A comparatively small financial investment could fix these issues, which really are within reach, and our students deserve them. I'll finish by saying, I may be biased, but I firmly believe that the best financial investment for our region is the education of our community. Thank you very much for your time today. Heading back to, to class to teach now. Thanks, folks.
Next. Next up is Sujana Kanjula.
Thank you, Scott, for laying a good foundation. Good evening. I'm Sujana Kanjula, and I've been teaching full-time at CCAC for 17 years. I live and vote in Wexford, which is in Ms. Filiagi's district. I work at North Campus, which is in Mr. Betkowsky's, sorry, Betkowsky's district. I'm the director of the Honors Program that provides an academically challenging and enriching learning experience for 500 highly motivated, academically prepared, and intellectually curious students. The program attempts to nurture the development of global citizens through collaborative and active learning, creative and critical thought, independent investigation, leadership development, cultural enrichment, and service to others. The program offers many opportunities through honors courses, research projects, field trips, hikes, operas, musicals, student panels, guest speakers, I think once Bethni Hallam visited, I think she was a speaker at CCAC, regional conferences, and even a short-term study abroad to India. To coordinate and implement all these enrichments, an adequate honors space is critical. In her essay, "Life of the Mind, Life of the House, This Place Matters," Vicky Awley elaborates. Although a community is ultimately defined by its people, the location and architecture contribute to a setting and a history that can either enhance or inhibit the achievements and creativity of those living and working there. We have already constructed honors hubs at South, Boys', and North Campuses. An honors hub consists of a resource room, a classroom, coordinator's office, and office for student leaders. But the current office space at our Allegheny campus is too small for its 200 honors students, which is inhibiting their achievements, creativity, and success. Additional funding to CCAC will help us find a more adequate space that will be a focal point for honors activity, helping us to function more efficiently while building a kind of honors community we dream of having at CCAC. This place will be used for a variety of, to teach a variety of honors courses, conduct orientations, hold leadership seminars, student faculty meetings, planning meetings, organizing fundraisers, and even training students to prepare for conferences. This will enable students to develop skills relating to their leadership, project management, team building, communication, which helps in their confidence building and personal growth. For example, this year, eight honors students traveled to present their research at Northeast Regional Honors Conference, and I'm very proud to say that CCAC students did, were par excellence, like, at par with the four-year institutions. So, in fact, I think we are, I'm wrapping up. So our president, Dr. Bullock, is scheduled to present his formal budget request in October. I would urge the county council to approve his request so that CCAC can have funds for worthy causes like honors hub. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next.
Next is Akilian Bray.
Not here.
And last would be Cheryl Friedman.
She's here.
Good evening, everyone, and members of council. It's nice to see you. I, Cheryl Friedman, CCAC Aviation. I see some familiar faces here. As a municipal councilwoman, I run into people at different events. I see, you know, Councilman DeMarco, Councilwoman Hallam, Councilman Macy, Councilman Paul Mary. It's nice to see everybody again, and for those that I haven't seen before, it's nice to see you for the first time. Has anyone taken a flight recently? Have you been delayed? Okay, have you been delayed? Have you been canceled?
I missed my connecting flight.
There you go. So chances are it's because we have an extreme national pilot shortage. I think this is unprecedented. I wish we had had it when I was a pup, back in the olden days when I was trying to get into the airlines. I had to beg, borrow, and steal for a job. Ultimately, I did get my airline job, and I spent 30 years with the airlines, with Continental, and then with United. So our aviation department here at CCAC is trying to assist with that shortage. We offer a highly professional program to create safe pilots who will enter the workforce within a short period of time. Our goals are enrollment, creating safe and professional pilots, graduation, and employment. So how do we achieve these goals? Well, we have Boeing-Jepson professional materials. We have two FAA-approved advanced aviation training devices. Our Redbird flight simulators are named Wilbur and Orville. Students can apply the skills and knowledge they learn in that simulator to the airplane, and also they can perform risky maneuvers in those simulators that they would not normally, you know, perform in the airplane itself. We have instructors who are current or former airline pilots, and we have a very robust aviation club. We have about 30 members. They do a lot of outreach for us, and they do a lot of field trips, like the National Weather Service, and they're participating in the triennial disaster drill that's going to be out on, at Greater Pitt on October 18th. I'm hurrying. We also have a structured FAA Part 141 curriculum. Currently, we are establishing an Alpha Eight-a-Roe fraternity at the college, and we are developing two drone classes. One is recreational, one is going to be a tactical drone class for policemen and firemen. And I talked to DA Seth Paul about that back at the spring conference. We require funding, like everyone else. I'm the chief cook and bottle washer, program coordinator, associate professor, and chief pilot. I need some help. I need some people to come with me, to go out to do some outreach. We have a fantastic admissions staff, and they're very dedicated, but some people need that technical information. We need to make purchases, some supplies, et cetera, et cetera. I'd love to have you visit us and take a ride in Wilbur and Orville. We won't let you crash, but if you do, you go home. Don't worry about it. We're planning on a ribbon cutting coming up. I do know this is budget time. We're doing the same thing, and I would greatly appreciate you thinking of us when creating this year's budget. CCAC is the biggest bank for your buck. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. You can contact me anytime. I'll leave my cards here. I have students call me on my cell phone during Mother's Day, the Super Bowl.
If you can wrap it up.
And I'm wrapping it up now. And you know what? I answer the calls. So again, I want to thank you very much for having me tonight, and I look forward to seeing you at some upcoming events. Again, thank you.
Before we adjourn, we need to go back to motion 12814-23. Jared, could you please read that one?
It's a motion to the council of Allegheny County authorizing the execution of a three-year contract with Henderson Brothers Incorporated for the placement of certain insurance policies.
I got confused, and we actually did vote with that with a positive recommendation out of executive committee. So Councilman Paul Mary, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Harry, no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco.
I abstain.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fattulis.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
I abstain, conflict of interest.
Ms. Nakaradi-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 13, nays zero, with two extensions. The motion passes.
Thank you. For anyone that didn't give reasons for extensions, if you could just notify Jared when you get an opportunity, please. We've, and motion to adjourn. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.[1637.35]
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. You can contact me anytime, I'll leave my cards here. I have students call me on my cellphone during Mother's Day, the Super Bowl.
If you could wrap it up?
And I'm wrapping it up now. And you know what? I answer the calls. So again, I want to thank you very much for having me tonight, and I look forward to seeing you at some upcoming events. Again, thank you.
Before we adjourn, we need to go back to motion 12814-23. Jared, could you please read that one?
It's a motion to the Council of Allegheny County authorizing the execution of a three-year contract with Henderson Brothers Incorporated for the placement of certain insurance policies.
I got confused, and we actually did vote with that with a positive recommendation onto Executive Committee. So Councilman Paul Mary, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I would.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Harry, no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
I'm staying.
Mr. Dewar?
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi?
Yes.
Mr. Fittulis?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
I abstain, conflict of interest.
Ms. Nakarati-Chapkus?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
President Katina?
Yes.
Eyes 13, nays zero, with two extensions, the motion passes.
Thank you. For anyone that didn't give reasons for extensions, if you could just notify Jared when you get an opportunity, please. We've, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
There we go.